So, so, um. If you go back a couple of years, we, the board attempted and has accomplished some remarkable stuff in terms of rewriting our restrictive documents. And that's the top of the heap of our rules. And that was voted upon by the community and they have been enacted. The next step is to go into our bylaws. And the bylaws are like the working rules that we all deal with. And I mean, when I tell you, and you're gonna hear some details about it by other people who know more than me. And there's plenty of people who know more than me. There are several things that, as an example, we still mention coax. He's been gone for twenty-eight years, twenty-nine years. Okay, so our documents have really not been revised to reflect that we are an HOA. We don't have a builder involved anymore. So there's gonna, and, and you're gonna hear numbers, like if we say there's a hundred and fifty things that have been changed before. Oh my God, what are you doing? Like, a whole bunch of them are just, they spell things wrong. They say he instead of he slash she. You know, they say things like the, the, well. To get into it, there's really gonna be a crux of things that we're looking to update. And as everything else, it has to be voted on by the community. This is not a decision by one or two, but three. So today's meeting has a singular purpose, dealing with the sharing of information in regard to the revision of our bylaws that will be going to a vote to the entire HOA membership. Today, we will lay the groundwork for this vote that will take place, hopefully, before the end of the year. The exact timeline will come out in the near future, but it involves a lot of things. And Steve Agresso heads up the committee for the bylaws revision. We'll get into a little bit of the detail, but the goal is to have this outvoted upon and tabulated before the end of the year. Agresso. So we did the similar process, was done for updating our restrictive documents. And in effect, the full transparency of this meeting was designed with having residents able to hear firsthand information from our committee chair, who is Steve Agresso, as well as our lawyer, Kevin Del Rosini. And he's part of the government legal services. So recently, we had another individual from the government about a different issue. This is in Kevin's wheelhouse. This is what he does. All right, now I'm gonna stop talking. And I'm gonna hand the microphone over to Steve Agresso, who's the chair of our committee.
Thank you, Mike. So I'll give you a little bit of detail about what's coming. And first, I just wanted to say thank you to the committee, Mark Romans Ralder, who's here tonight. Phil Collin, I believe, who's in the back, Rick Caravan. Annette is our board liaison, and Mike is our board president, who's been heavily involved. So we've been doing this about two years. And as he said, we finished the restrictive and protective. Now we're working on the bylaws. You're gonna see a lot of changes tonight. That paper you got in the email was very detailed, but the way the ballot's gonna be structured, it'll be summarized. So you won't see a hundred and fifty-two questions, you'll see fifteen. And Kevin's gonna go through that. So what we're doing right now is going through the process of getting the ballots printed, the bylaws printed for mailing. I can't give you the exact dates, that's the process. It'll happen probably within this week or next week, things will be mailed out. The voting process will start, I think, thirty days. And then, once the ballots are counted, we'll have a, I think there's a meeting scheduled in December to announce the results of what passed and what didn't pass. And the election committee, there's a committee that will be in charge of opening the ballots, consolidating the numbers, and reporting it back to the board. The last thing I want to say is that this has been a cross-functional team between the committee, the lawyers, and the board. No one person had any more input than the other. We worked on all the questions and, or the topics together. So I may be up here speaking about it, Mike, but it really is not our decision. It's your decision on how you vote. We just put it all together and tried to make it as easy as possible, and as updated as possible. And that, I'm done.
Good evening, everybody. Hi, my name is Kevin Del Rosini, lawyer with the government legal services. So we've been working with the board and with Dots of Policies, the Dots of Policies committee now for many months, probably over a year, actually, to work on this project to update and revise the bylaws. And like Mike was saying, the bylaws basically provide for the day-to-day functions of the association. So there's a lot of more material in there. Unfortunately, with Lake Ridge's bylaws, there's also a lot of superfluous material and a lot of items that needed to be updated for compliance, just revised for, to correct for clerical errors and things like that. So we're gonna get into the different categories of changes that we made. But first, I just want to talk briefly about the overarching goals of this project. So really, what we're trying to do with this project is to revise the bylaws to make them more manageable, more easily digestible, less cumbersome for people coming into the community and for current residents as well, to, to make them easier to understand. And so a lot of the revisions that we made were simply correcting existing errors, taking out items that were outdated or totally irrelevant, as Mike was saying, references to the builder, which have not been relevant for many years. And there's lots of them in there that we're going to take down. And so that was really the main thrust of a lot of the changes, just making the bylaws a little bit easier to wrap your hands around and understand. And to that end, the revised bylaws, what we're calling the second amended bylaws, that we're gonna ask you all to vote on very soon, that reduces the total page number of the bylaw packet that you receive as a new homeowner or as a current homeowner going to the, the office and picking up a new packet. It reduces the page number by thirty-two pages. So it's a really significant reduction in the, the total number of pages in these documents. And if everything is being removed, it's just totally irrelevant. If it's not something that has any significance, it's basically just an artifact that is there from several decades ago. So that was really the main thrust of, of much of this project. Now, there are several substantive changes to the bylaws as well, things that we're updating that we think will improve the community in various ways, some minor, some a little major. And each of those are addressed as separate ballot items on the ballot. So what your ballot's gonna look like is, it's gonna have thirteen separate questions, okay? Because there are so many individual changes in what, what Steve has up here right now, you all should have received. This is what we call the change log. So it's a spreadsheet of every individual change that... Can everybody hear me all right? Oh, sure, okay. All right, so this is what we call the change log.
Okay, good.
I'm good, okay. This is what we call the change log. It's a spreadsheet. Is this good? Good, okay. So this is a spreadsheet with every individual change itemized. And that's over a hundred changes, that's about a hundred and fifty different changes. And there's a lot, right, that's unmanageable to vote on every single individual change. Many of these changes are actually pretty minor, so they're just clerical corrections. They're corrections of grammar, things like that. Then we're moving, for example, obsolete provisions. You see, there are all the references to sponsor, those are the references to the builder. There's literally dozens of those. So it doesn't really make sense to vote on every single individual change. The way that we packaged it to make it a little bit easier for everybody to vote on is we categorized them into thirteen separate ballot items. And you'll vote on those thirteen separate ballot items. And you can run through those and you'll have them... Oh, perfect, okay. So the first question is, is this microphone okay, everybody? Is that good? Okay. All right. So here we have thirteen ballot questions that everybody's gonna vote on. And you see, the first question is amendments for clarity. So what we did here is change language in the existing bylaws to make it clearer, to make it more consistent, more concise, and more easy to understand. And that's forty-seven changes. So that's, it's a lot of different changes, but they're all very minor, relatively speaking. So just as an example, in the current bylaws, there are several terms that all mean about the same thing, but they're kind of thrown around and it causes confusion, it causes ambiguity. And so we consolidated all of those terms, those terms of lot owner, member, owner. All of these things basically mean the same thing, we just changed them all to lot owner, right? Just simple things like that that make the document a little bit easier to understand. That's forty-seven individual changes. The next one is clerical errors. There's fifty-nine clerical errors that we just went through and fixed. Like this is spelling errors, grammatical errors, things like that. And we're not asking you to vote on every single individual clerical error. We just vote on a whole batch. And if, if you're okay with us correcting errors or anything, vote yes on that question. Question three is amendments for compliance. So the current bylaws, being enacted, I believe in two thousand and three, a lot has changed in the past twenty-two years in the legal landscape. And so we went through and we identified the provisions that need to be updated for legal regulatory compliance, primarily relating to elections, for example. There have been many major legislative and regulatory changes relating to elections. And that's eight total changes in the bylaws. So again, if you're okay with us correcting the legal compliance issues in the documents, you just check yes on that question. And then the fourth question is kind of a batch of, of several individual changes is what we call the efficiency amendments. So here, what we're trying to do is reduce the size of the documents, make them, again, less cumbersome, easier to, to grasp. And the big example here is the removal of the sponsor provisions. This is the, the references to the builder. There's twenty-four of those changes, and some of them are pretty significant. And you'll see some of them, if you're looking at the documents, are several paragraphs wrong. So there's a lot of material that we're removing that's totally superfluous and has no effect on the association today. So that's question four, again, if you approve of these changes just to make the documents easier to understand, you would check yes on that one. So after that, we start to get into the, what we call substantive changes. So the, the use of the changes that will actually have an effect on the document's legal status. And so the first one that we get into is the required notice to board members of board meetings. So this is kind of an internal administrative... Yes, as I said, okay. Sorry about that, okay. So question five is notice to board members of board meetings. So this is kind of an internal administrative thing. So what this means is, when there's a board meeting scheduled, how do the board members get notice of the meeting? Now, practically speaking, in two thousand and twenty-five, a lot of the times, it's just by email. But the documents currently don't allow for that. And it doesn't really make sense. So we just said, look, you know, all the board members have email. I believe they all have a designated email for Lake Ridge. And so you just get notice of the meetings through email. That's simple enough. But that does have a legal impact on our bylaws. So that's question five. For most intensive purposes, it doesn't affect most residents, but it will affect the board members. Question six relates to snow clearing obligations. So the change here is to require snow clearing on the areas where the association needs to perform snow clearing when Tom's River indicates that it's going to provide municipal reimbursement. So under the Municipal Services Act, the municipality is required to provide services or reimbursement for services when it comes to snow clearing. For Lake Ridge, you get reimbursement from the township in certain instances when you perform snow clearing.
This is a very significant one, because not having the snow moved around is problematic, right? So, can you turn the thing? Because I'm being blinded, right? Oh, I'm good, I'm good, we're good, Tom. So anyway, when we talk about the ones that are kind of like fluff, the clerical ones and stuff like that, this is significant. Because the bylaws presently say, when there's three inches of snow, we must plow. The township, on the other hand, does not go along with that. So if we plowed every time there was three, or two and three-quarter, you know, we have a budget that's predicated on one snowfall each of four months, fifteen thousand dollars.
A month.
A month. Sixty thousand dollars a year. Now luckily, let's not go with that, we don't get any snow. But people will call my house and say, it's exactly three inches. Look, I measured my barbecue when you were coming to do my driveway because the laws say three inches. And I say, it's gonna be fifty degrees in two hours. And we're not going to spend the money because the township knows it's gonna be fifty degrees in two hours. And they're not sending out their plows to the rest of the Tom's River. So this leaves the board to make decisions about what makes sense. So as an example, if, if I drive around or Ed Whitman drives around, he sees it's unsafe. We're gonna plow him out of what? But I, we're not gonna get phone calls for exactly three inches. And then in the last case, the township said it was only two and... I don't know. I think it's one, I think it's one. So you have to look at this one, you have to read it, it is substantive. It really is something, it's not a clerical error. It's not getting rid of the, you know, the sponsor. This is one. And again, you get to vote on it. It leaves discretion to the board members to make a decision. If it's under three inches, we're paying for every penny of it.
I have a question, can I ask a quick question?
Sure, yeah.
I was just wondering, when they make it, when Tom makes that decision?
Yeah, where do they measure, say?
Where do they measure?
Yeah, that's, that's the question we don't have the answer to.
Okay, I was always wondering.
No one knows.
That's, that's just the way it is. So that's been problematic, so...
Because it's different by the water, of course, here.
Yeah, they measure in the ocean. Yeah, and that's problematic. Now, now, if we, if we are forced because of the bylaws to say it's three inches, even though it's gonna be fifty degrees in an hour, then we're wasting our money. Right? So this, and it comes down to someone has to make a decision. And that decision is usually made by three board members, not one. Right? So this one is just one that is in the books that doesn't leave any latitude for logic. It's raining, it's gonna be fifty degrees, but three inches fell, you know? Now, just to be clear about this, and, and this is an important one. And any one that's really important, you know, we're gonna highlight it. You know, we, we really all need to understand it. Every time that we do the driveways, we get zero dollars back from the township. Township doesn't do anyone's driveway. Every time we plow the parking lots, we get zero back because township is not gonna do that. And even when we salt our parking lots, we get nothing back. So every snowstorm has an impact because we have to plow so people can come to the clubhouse, and we have to salt that. So that was an important one that I think you should all be looking at. Someone else has a question?
I just have one question.
Ask your husband, no.
When do we find out if it's, if, if you make the decision? When do we find out? Do we find out right away? Yes, we cover that, or like, do they...
Yeah, okay, so you, you talk about the process for when we start snow? Okay, so I'll use an example. The last snowfall that happened, at four-thirty in the morning, I got a phone call from our contractor, Meticulus. The snow is stopping in ten minutes. Do you want us to plow? I'm sleeping. I said, please God, tell me seven inches fell and there's no decision. No, it looks like just short of three inches. Did the township say we could plow? No, they said no. What do you want me to do? So I get up out of my bed, I shovel my driveway, and I drive around to see how bad it is. And then I told them, plow all the main roads, I don't care, we have to pay for it because people have to go to work. A decision. I'm gonna tell you, I didn't wake up Ed Whitman, I didn't wake up Mary Atwood, I'm not waking somebody up at four-thirty, and, and I made the call. And I said that at the last open board meeting. So it's real time, our contractors are on-site, telling me when the snow is ending, telling me how much fell, and telling me how the township said yea or nay. That's how it works. No, they, they actually answer a phone call, there's an emergency, two cellphone numbers that we call, and someone answers one of them. But Meticulus does that, and they really... Okay? So, all right, so I'm gonna get stopped, and then we can go on.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, so as Mike was saying, that is an important amendment. And it will, I believe ultimately, it'll help the association save money while just, you know, helping the, the day-to-day lives of the residents during the snow season. So question seven, and I, I have to give the board credit for this one because this is not one that I flagged, this is one that the board flagged. So the, the current bylaws permit, under certain circumstances, directors to receive compensation from the association. And the board saw that and said, no, that is not acceptable. The board position is a volunteer position, and we don't want a director to ever be in a position to be receiving compensation for any services that they provide to the association. So this amendment would remove that language and prohibit board members from receiving compensation, it would always be a volunteer position. So that's question seven. Question eight relates to ARC, the Architectural Review Committee. And so this amendment would formally create the office of a chairperson for ARC. I think practically speaking, there, there is a chairperson for ARC right now. So this would really just be bringing the bylaws up to speed to reflect that current reality and to create a chairperson who would head up the committee and take the lead for, for all the important issues that they deal with. So question nine relates to capital improvements. So this is when you're, you're doing something to the property that is new, and it's a, a major project. Currently, the bylaws require that any capital improvement project that exceeds ten thousand dollars be subject to a vote of the members, and you, what it requires is majority approval before the board can move forward with that project. That ten thousand dollar figure was implemented when the original bylaws were first written back in the early nineteen nineties. And ten thousand dollars doesn't make you nearly as far today as it, as it did back then. And so this amendment is not gonna do away with that cap. It's just gonna raise the cap to a more meaningful level in today's day and age. Twenty thousand dollars would be, be the new limit, from ten thousand to twenty thousand. And again, that, once you hit that limit, then a vote would go out to the members. The, the, the big reason why this is beneficial is for those projects that are under the cap, which are, in, in reality, in today's world, not super major projects. To send them out to a vote, it's costly, it's an administrative burden. And you're already voting on the board. So number one, you're trusting your, your elected, democratically elected representatives to make the right call. But then secondly, you know, if they make the wrong call, you, you can vote them out of office, so...
I just want to add to that, it also delays the process of what might be a routine repair. So as an example, if one of the air conditioners go, or two pumps went and cost eighteen thousand dollars to repair them, well, we weren't gonna go to a vote for that. But we had to replace the pumps otherwise we couldn't water the common grounds. So there are certain instances that, again, ten thousand dollars doesn't go nearly as far, you know, now as it did before. So raising the cap to twenty gives more latitude to get things done expeditiously, and it kind of makes more sense. But again, I want to just say this, if you don't like that wording, you vote no. That's how it works. So if fifty-one percent of the people say okay, that twenty thousand dollars is okay, then it is. It's not, you can vote yes or no, like which, please, how, you raise your hand.
Yeah, Mike, the things you mentioned, also not capital improvements, those are heads, but...
Well, in that case, it was a repair, yes. But when you're talking about a capital improvement, I, I...
We don't have anything that's not cheap.
You, you tell me what, what, I'm sorry, somebody said...
Yeah, finish your sentence.
No, I'm saying, it's gotta be significant to be a capital improvement by itself, right? We're not changing Michaels, so I'm trying to think of one that's gonna have an improvement.
We just think they security guard, that improvement would have...
No, that's not, but that may go to a vote anyway, just because of the different reason. So if we wanted to add something somewhere... A golf course, he wants a golf course. How about a plumbing green? No, if we wanted to add, I don't know, say something like a dog park, let's say, I don't know.
Trampoline?
A trampoline, a broken hip, soul... Yeah, that's a good example. If you wanted to do solar power, it's not gonna cost ten or twenty thousand dollars. If you wanted to add a heater to the pool, it's not gonna cost ten or twenty thousand dollars. But we're talking about things that, oh, I, I'm trying, I'm struggling for it.
I can't think of anything that costs ten thousand dollars.
I can't see anything that costs ten thousand dollars.
Everything's gonna be more than the threshold.
Sorry? Yes, well, redoing this is part of the capital improvement that we promised, that's a good example. If we were replacing the carpet, right? That's a good, great example. So, you know, if we're just doing the draperies and it costs eleven thousand dollars, it wouldn't go to a vote. If we're doing the floors of the draperies, it's gonna go to a vote. Great, thank you.
So the dollar limit on the repairs, Mike?
Sorry, say what?
Something breaks ass, or a dollar limit, what you could spend?
No, on, on a repair, like if an air conditioner broke tomorrow, we, we replace those.
Like, oh, the pump's gone, they're a hundred thousand dollars, you could just...
No, no, they, they usually cost like twelve thousand. Anything under twenty thousand dollars, the board has discretion to spend the money on a capital project. Not a repair, a repair is a different thing. If, if a water main broke, we're not going to a vote, we're just replacing it now.
All right, Mike?
Twenty, it's gonna, it's going from ten, it's going from ten thousand to twenty because ten thousand was a lot more money back twenty-something years ago.
All right, thanks, Mike. And by the way, we will have a question and answer period once I'm done here. So I don't plan any time for everybody to get their questions in a little bit later on. So that's the capital improvement provision, and that would be question nine on the ballot that you receive. Question ten relates to litigation and enforcement proceedings. So I'm, I'm a lawyer, and they say when, when you're a hammer, everything's a nail. And so we tend to see things in terms of court and litigation. But it is a significant cost to everybody in the association when the association is sued. And so what this provision would do is allow the association to recover its costs in the litigation. Yeah, so that, that could be a significant benefit to the association in a lot of different instances. So that, that's gonna be question number ten on the ballot that you receive. Question eleven relates to what we call tort immunity. So tort immunity relates to personal injury lawsuits. It's a specialized type of lawsuit, because it would not apply to all lawsuits. You already have a provision in the current bylaws that exempts the association from liability for personal injury lawsuits unless the association was grossly... for, uh, personal injury lawsuits unless the association is grossly negligent, okay? Uh, what the statute that allows this provision says is, you can exempt the association from liability in these lawsuits for the owner or the owner's spouse. Uh, for whatever reason, when the bylaws were written, uh, they only put the owner in there, so technically speaking, if an owner's spouse wanted to sue the association for a personal injury, and the association was not grossly negligent, the association would have to pay that out, or more likely, put it into the insurance, and the insurance would pay it out, causing the insurance rates to decrease. Uh, so what we're doing here with this provision is tightening it up a little bit, uh, making it reflect, uh, the statute that allows this provision to exist. Uh, and it just reduces costs for everyone, and this is a well-accepted provision, uh, throughout, uh, all community associations in New Jersey, or most of them, I should say. Uh, and it will reduce costs primarily by reducing, uh, insurance premiums, that's really the majority of costs, uh, in this context. So ask question eleven on your ballot when you receive it. Question twelve relates to what we call adequate notice of open meetings. Uh, so again, this is kind of just bringing the bylaws up to date. Uh, it, some items that are included in this provision right now, uh, are things like telegrams, telegram notices. Yeah, and nobody's receiving, uh, telegrams these days, I don't think. Uh, so, we're, we're, we're taking out the, uh, the word telegram, and we're adding email. Uh, so, the, the significance of adding email here is not that everybody needs to get emails, uh, as notice, but you can if you want to, and that's really the significance of this provision. Again, just bringing the bylaws into two thousand and twenty-five, you know, you can get an email that says, "We're gonna be having a meeting on such and such date," and that's good. But if you want, if you prefer your papers, or prefer some other way, some other means of notice that the association can accommodate, uh, that you'll, you can still do that. This is really just to allow for email, uh, under the bylaws. Uh, and then question thirteen relates to, uh, what's called the membership fee, uh, we're proposing a renaming it the lot acquisition fee, just to make it a little bit clearer. And again, this question, uh, this particular amendment is really just a clarifying amendment, so, uh, this refers to a policy that is already in effect, uh, when you purchase a new property, uh, in the association, generally speaking, you have to pay, uh, fees, or a called a membership fee. Uh, and for many, many years now, the board has implemented a policy that exempts, uh, certain transfers within the community, when somebody's moving from one home to another inside of the community. Uh, that's already adopted as a resolution, uh, it's recorded with Ocean County, uh, many of you may, may have seen it. Uh, and so really what we're doing here is just clarifying the bylaws to reflect that policy. So that's question thirteen, and these are all the individual questions. Uh, so before we get to audience questions, I just wanna run through how you can review all of the changes. Review all the changes with references to diagrams that you received. So see if you're gonna go back to the action.
Yeah, the clock?
Yeah. Okay. So, we all should have received the spreadsheet that I was talking about a little bit earlier. We have three columns here, on the left-hand column, you'll see the location of the proposed change. Something I wanna stress here is, this is the location in the current bylaws. Uh, and so what that's significant is, when we went through and made these changes, it changed the article or section numbers. So all of these citations are, for example, Article One, Section Two F. If we make a change to Two G, you know, it's gonna change all of the subsequent subsections. Uh, so it's important that when you're looking at these changes, you're looking at the current bylaws, which you'll receive, uh, with your election package, or your, your voting package. Uh, and so that's the, where you can find the proposed provisions. In the middle column, you'll see the proposed provisions. Uh, and it generally will just say what the change was, so changed, deleted, inserted, certain language within the provision. Uh, and it's not already clear, like the, the clarity or clerical amendments are generally pretty clear, there's a reasoning behind them. Uh, but for example, if you look down number eleven here, uh, this is an amendment for, uh, regulatory compliance reasons. And you'll see, it modified the language related to voting anonymity, uh, and the reason for that is to comply with a particular statute called the Plant Real Estate Full Disclosure Act. Uh, and so, you can look at this middle column to see what language was changed, uh, and in some instances, the reasoning for that change. Uh, and then the third column is very important, because this is how we classified the particular amendment. So if you recall, on the, uh, the ballot, ballot questions, uh, we had certain questions that were grouped, uh, by, by category more or less, and these are the categories. So, uh, if you're looking at the ballot question for the clerical amendments, the clerical corrections, uh, they're going to be referred to as clerical in that third column. And so these are question number two, amendments to address clerical errors, and there's fifty-nine of them. You go through that change log, and you can see each individual change, uh, for clerical reasons. Same with the clarity amendments, clarity amendments, as well as the, the compliance and efficiency amendments, and then those bigger changes that are broken out individually, uh, in the ballot. They are referred to as the substantive amendments, if you can see here, number forty-eight. Uh, in the third column, it's referred to as a substantive change. Uh, and so that's how you go through and look, if you wanna, if you really care about this stuff, and you wanna review the specific changes that we're suggesting, uh, that's how you do it, with reference to the change log, uh, and the other documents that you're gonna receive. You're gonna receive the original bylaws, uh, a version of the original bylaws with all of the changes marked, okay? So it's gonna show you basically with strike-throughs and inserted language, track changes, for anybody who's familiar with Word documents. Uh, you're gonna see all of the changes essentially inserted into the original bylaws. Uh, you're gonna receive this document, or you already have, uh, and then you're gonna receive a clean copy of what we're proposing as the final version of these amended bylaws. The last thing that I wanted to, to talk about is how these amendments will go into effect. So after you vote on them, there are these thirteen ballot questions. So let's say, for example, that twelve of the ballot questions succeed, and one of them fails. Uh, so the way that we would implement that is, we would have a fresh version of the bylaws with all of the, the passed amendments inserted, and the one that failed would simply revert to the existing form in the bylaws. So, for example, um, that one about the snow clearing, if, let's say that one fails, people don't like it for whatever reason, they think it's great amendment, but you know, let's say, you know, it doesn't get to fifty-one percent, then it needs to pass. Uh, all of the other changes would go into effect, and the current version of that snow clearing, uh, provision would remain in effect. Uh, so that would just remain in the bylaws. So, that's kind of the process, um, and we were discussing earlier, we expect, uh, the voting to take place in the next couple of months, hopefully, before the end of year, uh, a specific timeline to be determined, uh, but it will be coming soon. Uh, and so, that's all I have, uh, but I would be happy to answer any, any questions, so we'll, so we have some microphones off to the side as well.
Beautiful question. Um, can we put the, the document back up with the thirteen questions, real quick?
Sure. This one?
Um, Donna, it's really, uh, only been here about three days.
I shut this off, right?